Call to order, City Forest Park. Council meeting number 1334, April 15, 2019. Let it stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence.
Call to roll, please.
Burns?
Here.
Collins?
Here.
Herbie?
Here.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Ness?
Here.
Let the minutes show that all of the council meetings are presented and accounted for, need a motion to excuse the law director. Councilwoman Herbie.
I would move to excuse the law director.
Second.
And moved in second that we excuse Mr. Wykoff. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to excuse, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the law director is hereby excused. Item number two is minutes. Should have all received a copy of the minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Thank you, hearing none, we will move to item number three, Business of the Month. Mr. Paul Brim.
Mayor members of council, thank you very much. As all of you know, I don't get started in the morning until I get my morning coffee from Starbucks, so our next Business of the Month presentation is a nice one for us. At its founding in 1971, Starbucks was a roaster and retailer of whole bean and ground coffee, tea, and spices with one store in Seattle. Today, the company connects with millions of customers and has more than 20,000 retail stores in 65 countries. The company has always believed in serving the best coffee possible, and its master roasters bring out the balance and rich flavor of coffee through a variety of signature Starbucks blends. The coffee is complemented by fantastic line of pastries, cookies, and sandwiches. Equally important, the company prides itself on creating gathering places for people, friends and family, where they can all meet. Customers not only enjoy quality service and exceptional beverages, but they find an inviting atmosphere. And recently, our local Starbucks made a significant investment of more than $100,000 to renovate the Forest Park store, completing an impressive project that includes new furniture and art, plus a new warm paint scheme that brightens the overall setting and creates a more inviting environment for the store's many patrons. In recognition of the local store's decision to reinvest in our community and its commitment to our residents, to all of our residents, it is our pleasure to recognize the Forest Park Starbucks as our April 2019 Business of the Month. I think those of you who are regulars along with me know Jason McIntosh, who's the manager at the store. Unfortunately, Jason couldn't be with us tonight. He got off at work at 6:00 and called me up and said he has to be back in the store at 4:00 in the morning, so I told him I would be happy to bring the award, not at 4:00 in the morning, but I will bring the award to him tomorrow morning when I stop by the shop. So, again, congratulations to Starbucks. It's always nice when one of our businesses reinvests in the community. So, if you haven't been there yet, I encourage you to stop by and see the new store. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the business is a motion to amend agenda. Councilwoman Herbie.
Yeah, I would move to amend the agenda and take up at this time item C under New Business, a motion to appoint a candidate to a board or commission.
Second.
And moved in second that we amend agenda and take up at this time item C on a new business, a motion to appoint candidates to a board or commission. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on a motion to amend?
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Motion to amend the agenda passes 7-0, so at this time we will take up item C on the new business. Motion being ordered, Councilwoman Holt.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Lori Wright Smith to the Civil Service Commission for the term expiring 11/30/2021.
Second.
And moved in second that we appoint Ms. Lori Wright Smith to the Civil Service Commission for a term that would expire 11/30/31. Is there any discussion, Councilwoman Holt?
None, thank you.
I'm sorry, 21. Excuse me?
No discussion.
Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so at this time we will have Ms. Smith to come over. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
This is Councilwoman Holt. I'll be talking to the chair.
Yes.
Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Lori Wright Smith.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio?
Of the State of Ohio.
The Charter?
The Charter.
Of the city?
Of the city.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully.
Honestly?
Honestly.
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge of duties?
Discharge the duties.
As a member of the Civil Service Commission?
As a member of the Civil Service Commission.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone, I thank you for volunteering, giving your time to, for the city that you live in, the city of Forest Park. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, we would move to item number four, Communication from the Public. And before we do this, as usual, I would just say that we're happy that you're all here. However, this is a time when those of you who have something else to do or somewhere else to go, you may feel free to leave if you'd like. You don't have to go. You're more than welcome to stay, but this is when we usually take a little break to do that. Okay. So, moving on then to item number four, Communication from the Public. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the council? If so, please come forward and sign in and tell us and state what you would like for us to know. I know this young lady, someone signed in already, yes.
I didn't want to go before other citizens, but it's a pleasure to be back in the city of Forest Park. My name is Rosalyn Foltz, and I'm an aide to Congressman Steve Shabbitt. I work out of the Cincinnati District Office at 441 Vine Street, room 3003, Cincinnati, Ohio 45202. And Mayor Johnson, thank you, and members of council, thank you so much for this time. Just wanted to touch base to just kind of remind you that there are services available to you and your citizens through the constituent services operation of the First Congressional District. The congressman has an office in downtown Cincinnati and one in Lebanon. And what our primary mission is, is to help the residents of the First Congressional District with problems that they may have with any federal agency or department or branch of the military. The congressman has a website where you can access a privacy release form. I've left some with Ms. Dirkson.
Dirkson.
We mail these out, too, for people who may not be comfortable working with a computer or may not have a functioning printer, but the privacy release form is a requirement in all U.S. House of Representatives and U.S. Senate District Offices. And it's the document that allows the constituent to express his or her concern that they want the elected official to pursue. And people can request these, and they can go out and mail, they come back that way, or they can send it as a fax or as an attachment to one of our email accounts, but it's the tool that basically starts the whole assistance process. And, you know, just for example, we have a high demand for Social Security, Medicare, Veterans Internal Revenue Service, HUD, U.S. Customs and Immigration, U.S. Postal Service passports, EPA issues, FBI issues, Department of Labor, Department of Agriculture, and many, many more. Some of the other services that I want to cover with you tonight, because I know this is televised and people can refer back, the office also facilitates military academy nominations. And you have many fine young people here in the city of Forest Park, and we're beginning to have information sessions for parents and grandparents, and our office does contact schools to apprise them of when these information sessions are going on, but please feel free to call the office at area code 513-684-2723, and that number is in operation 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, if there are residents who are interested in getting their children, nieces, nephews, grandchildren involved in that process, and start early. Start when they're in the sixth and seventh grade to find out what some of the demands are, if they're interested in West Point or Annapolis, or the Air Force Academy at Colorado Springs, or the U.S. Merchant Marine Academy. Some of the other services that the congressman's office provides have to do with Capitol Flag requests. Many times, people will request a flag that's flown over the Capitol Building, Capitol Tours and other attractions, federal grant information and support letters. Feel free to call the office, and we can do some research for you, and certainly, if your economic development or another department is vying for a grant, let us know, because we do support letters. We also do letters of recognition for milestone birthdays, anniversaries, retirements, Eagle Scouts, Girl Scout Gold Awards, American Heritage Girls, any type of public distinction, high school graduates, and we try to secure White House greetings, and those are in high demand as well, but we can sometimes help with those as well. Let us know about school visits to Capitol Hill, because we can be of help to those efforts as well. And there's one thing that I wanted to mention, there is a congressional award for young people 14 to 23 years old. And so, call our office, because I do believe the Congress is opening up a new cycle where they're accepting applications for young people who have given a lot, first of all, who've achieved academically, but also given a lot to their community. And that can be a real asset to a young person on their college resume, or even resume after college or after high school. Our office hours are 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and for people who want to leave a comment about a current event, if they want to reach out to the congressman to ask him to vote a certain way, our office phone lines and fax lines are in operation 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And believe me, people do utilize that particular courtesy, although we're not the policy and legislative people, we do hear from constituents all over the First Congressional District. So, I just want to encourage people, if they want to leave their opinion about anything, also, I want to repeat the website, www.shabbitt.house.gov, because there's so much information on the website, and the congressman does have a presence on Facebook and Twitter. One thing, though, that I wanted to specifically close by stating is that the congressman is very, very interested in doing a town hall. I'm sure you all have been reading about the town halls that he's been doing of late, and I know that his student, Councilmember Regina Collins, is someone that I was talking with and kind of reached out to about that. We're very interested in finding a location out here for a town hall, so if you could help us with that, Mayor Johnson, Councilmember Collins, and anyone, city manager, please let us know. And thank you so much for this opportunity. It's really a pleasure to be back here. The last time I was out here, it was snowing in January of 2018. Does anyone have any questions of me? Well, thank you so much for this time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate your comment. Okay, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, item number five, reports of standing committees, the first of those standing committees. I'm sorry, do we have another person? I'm sorry, pardon me, I didn't, did you come up and sign in, please, and tell us who you are and tell us what your issue?
Do you want this?
No, you can do it here. Just state your name, please.
Oh, good evening, and thanks for having me here. I am a citizen, been a citizen of this community for 39 years. I've retired from the United States Postal Service in management since 2011. I've been a...
Excuse me, could you tell us your name, please?
Oh, I had no idea, I'm sorry. I'm Donna Turnbull-Williams.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and again, I have all kind of concerns, but the major concern that I'm here tonight, and I'm just getting my foot on the ground with this endeavor, I am a family childcare provider right now at my home, inner circle. I don't advertise it due to the restrictions of having fences and gates around our property, so for security of the children, I will never put my signs out. However, I am a quality childcare service of five star. I just submitted the five star rating, and I'm just waiting on Columbus to come down and thank me. So, up to right now, I have my three star secured, but I can't even put the signs out front. I've taken a real great concern of children and the young parents in our neighborhood and in our city. I am very, very here, very adamant about preschool promise, which I realize does not take place here. I didn't realize it until after I was on the ground level of even chairing that committee, they decided to send me off to school. I've done a whole bunch of childcare schooling, CDAs and everything, they're trying to make me get the degrees now, but all that said, I was on that ground level with preschool promise, just to find out it was only, it only got approved in the city of Cincinnati, and I did not think that was too fair, because I know a lot of the children that we run into out here in Forest Park, they come from down there, and they were forced out here. Their parents was forced out here. They was forced out of public housing in the city, and they were forced out to the suburbs, including Westchester. And in one of our groundbreaking meetings we just had, and we talked to some of the people that were in the Governor Dewine's office, they were in the meeting with us over at 4C, and they wanted to hear our concerns. They actually was teaching us how to become advocates and getting our concerns out in writing and be specific about it. And I vowed that my first specific thing was going to be to come to a council meeting in my hometown, right here where I live, been for 39 years, because this is where I would like to see change, and I would like to see that preschool promise get on our ballots here, simply because once I saw what it does, all of my constituents, I go to their homes, and I'm just amazed at what I see in their homes for childcare. It looks just like you're in a Montessori somewhere. They have been, they have the upwards of anything, furniture, educational materials, and I see we're building up on, I think this is our school we're building up on over here. The school will look good, but you want the children in this neighborhood that goes into that school to be quality ready, the preschoolers, we want them quality ready, we want them in school at two and a half years old. A lot of them leave me and go to school at two and a half, including my granddaughter who left me at two and a half, went to a Montessori right on Springdale Road, and now she's seven years old at Fairview and is just doing amazing things. So, I continue that trend with the other children that I take care of, and they like it, but I still feel like I'm missing out, and not just me, if it's other providers in Forest Park that's there. And I have talked to some, I've talked to some, a young lady just opened up the Little Miracles right here, that's her second one, and she said, fortunately, she don't get help with preschool promise, and she's doing really good things, Monique Johnson specifically is her name. So, I have been partnering with some of the childcare providers, I'm a partner with Cincinnati Public Health and Safety Department to stamp out childhood obesity. That's one of our initiatives. So, we doing a lot of things within our home, it just doesn't seem like to me, I don't feel it, when I get out here in the community, and I talk to the other daycare providers, I've even talked to the head, Start School right here on Waycross, I've talked to them as well, and they have a program going over there, but I think that preschool promise, we missing out on a lot. So, all I could do is be a first advocate, if I am the first, to speak on getting it on the ballot here. They say the taxpayers' dollars in the city of Cincinnati is paying for it, and that's why it can't be recognized here. And I just don't take that for an asset to stop. So, I even actually told the young lady in Dewine's office that we need to just keep pushing it out here, because some people are out here not by choice, and it's hard for them to get around, they're paying so much money for daycare and everything, and it's going to be a sad day if we don't get these kids quality education. And that's pretty much all I could add at the meeting. I just got through getting rid of some kids, so excuse me, but I was determined to be here tonight, dropped off my taxes, and they told me it was tonight, so I said, I'll be here. And I thank you again for your time, thank you for listening, and I will come back again.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else from the public wish to address council? Thank you, I apologize for not seeing your hand first. We will now move to reports of standing committees, the first of those being Law Committee, Councilwoman Collins.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report from the Law Committee at this time, however, I am available for questions, to answer questions.
Any questions for Councilwoman Collins? Hearing none, Councilwoman Collins, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session of the 22nd. Do you have any to add?
Yes, I would like to state that I would love to sponsor or host U.S. Congressman Steve Shabbitt, my former seventh grade teacher, in a town hall meeting within the confines of Forest Park.
I will make note of that, and I will discuss that with the city manager, and I don't know if that would be an item for the agenda, but we will talk about it in terms of whether or not that's, how that should be handled.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a report tonight, thank you.
Councilwoman Holt, I have no items on the agenda for you, do you have any to add?
No, I do not, thanks.
Next report is Public Improvement and Facilities, Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report at this time.
Any questions for Councilwoman Moore? Councilwoman Moore, I have no items for you for the next work session, do you have any to add?
No, I do not, but I would like to let the residents know that the city is hosting Gospel Fest Saturday, April 27th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Dayspring's Church of God, and so, we hope that residents can come out and celebrate the community through faith, and so, it's a great event, and so, we encourage people to come out.
Thank you. And I would reiterate, I would add to that, it is one of our annual events, and it is a great, and I want to, in advance, again, thank Dayspring, Dayspring for hosting, allowing us to use their facility. Councilwoman Moore, I don't have anything on the agenda for you, do you have anything for next week?
No, I do not.
Next committee report is Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Ness.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report at this time.
Any questions for Councilwoman Ness? Hearing none, Councilwoman Ness, I don't have any items for you, do you have any to add?
I do not.
Next committee report is Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, could I make a couple comments, however?
Sure.
We had, on April 9th, the Fire Department's Deputy Chief, Jermaine Hill, did a very great presentation at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon on the 9th, and it was about a crash course on how to best handle medical emergencies in the workplace. And then, the last thing that I will add, the weather is now fully in spring mode, and so, just making sure that we're seeing a lot of people out and about, especially kids on bikes and whatnot, please make sure that you are properly dressed and in terms of shoes, and also helmets and equipment, so that you are safe, and that's all I have.
Okay. Next report then would be Ways and Means, Councilwoman Herbie.
I have no report.
I have no items for you on the agenda, do you have any to add?
Yes, sir.
Next committee report is Committee of Development, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just one quick note regarding property maintenance enforcement and code activity, as was previously mentioned, it is spring, and the property maintenance teams are going through the community and taking care of transient issues that are throughout the community from a spring cleaning perspective, but also be mindful of grass. You know, the code enforcement will begin in earnest this month as we go into our first grass growth spurt for the year, so please be mindful of that. And I just would like to also mention that I'm sure our thoughts and prayers are with the folks in Paris, France, with the loss of the Notre Dame Cathedral today. It was burned probably about three or four hours long of the entire structure, with the exception of the granite in front, so...
Any questions for Mr. Burns? Mr. Burns, I have no items for you, do you have anything to add?
No, I do not, thank you.
Next report is Intergovernmental Relations and Communications, that is my committee, I have no report, and I have no items on the agenda for the work session. We'll then move to item number six, the mayor's report, just a couple of things to note, to add to some of the things that were said. First of all, you may have noted or seen as you were coming in tonight, a number of little people, little young boys over at the fire department, they were, it was a boy scout troop, and they were being, they were receiving some instruction as well as being shown around the fire station, and specifically, as is generally the case, children of that size love to climb on, play in, and look at the fire trucks, so that's what that would have been all about. Also, one of the things that is, that started in April, that we have done every year for the last several years, is, and we do it on schedule, so if you have branches and debris to bring out to the curbs, they will be picked up, not picked up, the chipper program is in full force and effect. I would caution you on a couple of things. One, make sure that you find out what day the chipper service is going to be in your neighborhood, on your street in particular, because if you don't, the way it works is only one time a month will it be on your street. So, if you put it out there, and you've already missed that day for April, it's not going to come around again until that next time in May. We don't revisit, because it's just, we don't have the manpower or the necessary equipment to run it all over the city all the time. That's a free service that's provided by the city for our residents. And secondly, the chipper program was not and is not designed to grind up... And secondly, the chipper program was not and is not designed to grind up trees, nor is it designed to grind up very large chunks of wood. So if, if you're having a tree taken down and you're putting those chunks of wood out there, the city won't be doing those. We only, I'm not, I don't at this point remember the diameter of the branches that we do. How many? So anything above that will not be picked up, and will not be grinded. So I know, we, we run into this problem every year. People will have a tree taken down in their yard, and they will put the huge branches as well as the, even they, they put it out there, sometimes they'll even put it out for firewood. Well, we don't do firewood either, so beware of that, and take advantage of the service if you need to have to. The only exceptions we make to that is if we have, and as we have done in the past, if we have very severe weather, with a lot of branches and things come down over the city, we will deviate from our normal schedule and make an extra, make extra runs where we can. Now, we can't, again, we can't do the whole city, so we will, our public works people, police and fire people, as they're around, will let the chipper people know of those areas that were hit hardest and where branches have been put out, and we will make a run to, to do those. But normally, we follow that schedule very closely and very tightly. So that's another one of the things that, that we do. And finally, as was mentioned about code enforcement, it is getting, the seasons have changed, the daylight saving times or whatever that is that I hate is there again. But one of the things that I, I really want to ask our citizens to be where, be, to be mindful of, when you're parking your cars in your drives or on the street, be mindful that even though not as much as they used to, there are still kids who do play outside. And we need to be very, more careful than we would in the wintertime because of the presence of kids. Also, our code enforcement and police people will be or have been instructed that we're going to be cracking down on some things that we have, we were hoping that people would just automatically do themselves, but it, it gets to be that thing of give and take a mile. It is illegal in the city of Forest Park to overhang sidewalks. If you're parking your car so that it's over the sidewalk, that is a violation. It may not seem very significant or important, but if you happen to be out, out, out during the morning when kids are going to the bus or coming back from the bus stop, when you overhang the sidewalk, you're forcing kids to have to walk out in the street around the back of your car going to or coming from their bus stop. That's not safe for them. Another reason we asked people not to overhang the sidewalk and that that particular ordinance was passed was there are a significant number of handicapped people in Forest Park, some of them wheelchair bound. They, a lot of them, the, the only forms of exercise they can have is to get out or get fresh air, is to get out in their wheelchairs and go up and down the sidewalks. When, again, when you're overhanging that sidewalk, you're forcing that person to have to try to go across grass, which is very, very difficult if you've been in or around people with wheelchairs, a lot of times out into the street to get back up on the sidewalk to complete their journey. That's really not fair to them, just because I want to save a few steps and have my car parked over, hanging over the sidewalk. We, we understand and we realize that more and more people in the city have more and more cars now. There's more street parking, people are using their garages less, and I won't even get onto that one. So they park in their drives, and when we have homes with two, three, four cars, and it's more convenient to do that, that's when we get people overhanging the sidewalks. So let's not, let, let's not do that. The same kind of more strict enforcement is going, you're going to see in school zones, more enforcement of speeding, traffic violations, and parking in, especially like across the street, parking in handicapped spots when you don't have a handicapped sticker. You may be in a car that has a handicap plate or that has a handicap sticker, but if you are the driver and that sticker was not issued to you for you, then you're in violation if you park in that spot. So just keep those things in mind. All of those are some of the kinds of things that comes with spring. So let's, let's be a little more concerned about each other and try not to make things more inconvenient for each other. They will conclude my reports, probably the longest one I had in a long time.
I just got one question.
I'll answer any question. Yes, ma'am.
Are the flashing lights, are they not working anymore? Are they not on? Because they're not on, they're not on in the morning?
They should be.
They haven't been on for a while?
Which one specifically? We're talking about the ones?
Both directions, out here on Kemper.
Okay, the school light, the school flash.
Flashing lights, yeah?
We'll, uh, we'll make a note and check on that for you. Thanks for bringing that up. Anybody else got any other questions for the mayor's report? Hearing none, we will move next item number seven, the city manager's report.
Excuse me, I have a question in reference to that chipper schedule. I'm looking at it.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking at it, and it says for the certain street, the I Street specifically, it's, it has two dates, April the ninth and the twenty-third. And the reason I'm trying to get this clear, because a lot of people ask me everything. I'm right on their corner, and they really think I'm still the block watch captain. But I see they have a lot of limbs out there in the I section, and I gladly tell them that they will sit there until the twenty-third now, because.
If they, if they didn't get them out there, so they would have, it would have been done on the ninth.
I think they believe that every two.
No, no. That's, and it, they can, tho- those schedules are two things. They're in the lobby, so if they want, if somebody wants to pick up one for themselves and or for that, for that area, they can, or they can go online, it's, it's on the, in the website, it's there, or can just simply call, and the Public Works Department or the front desk will tell you, will, will tell them exactly what the dates are that they will pick them up. And those dates should be the same dates for each month. I mean, we, they don't change, what I'm saying, the, the dates, I mean, for an example, the day of the week, if you're, if you're the fourth Friday in April, then you're going to be the fourth Friday for the rest of the time that the, that the chipper program is in. Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager.
I don't have to talk about the chipper program, and I don't have to talk about increased enforcement, because that is absolutely the truth, and it's, the bottom line is just respect your neighbors, and, and that's really what it's all about. The department reports have been filed. They are with Sally. And Finance Department, Tax Department, I want to give them some kudos for the last, basically, two weeks, but especially today and the weekend, where they were, basically them and everyone else in the city, they pulled a lot of hands, it was all hands on deck, and every department pitched in and helped to make, make things run as smoothly as they could. But if you were here today, you saw a pretty well-oiled machine, but a lot of people still sitting because it was very crowded. But people moved through the system, and I think we provided a very good service for our community. Other than that, if you were to answer any questions, and.
Any questions for the city manager? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Next report, next item on the agenda is item number eight. Other reports, the first of those will be counsel, clerk of council, Mrs. Duxell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report this evening.
Any questions for clerk of council? Hearing none, we will move on to article number nine, new business. First item under new business is item A, ordinance number zero eight dash twenty nineteen, and this one must be read in full. Ms. Duxell.
Ordinance number zero eight dash twenty nineteen. Amending annual twenty nineteen appropriation ordinance zero five twenty nineteen. Whereas the twenty nineteen annual appropriations was adopted by council on December third, twenty eighteen, and whereas the anticipated revenue and expenditures are coming in as anticipated for the general fund and the other funds of the city, and whereas appropriations must be available, must be available, must be within available resources per the Ohio Revised Code, and whereas an amended certificate of resources is being requested from the Hamilton County Budget Commission, now therefore being ordained by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, Section One. There's a twenty nineteen annual appropriation ordinance twenty eight dash twenty eighteen and zero five dash twenty nineteen, as hereby amended, making the following additional appropriations and budget modifications for the following funds as follows. Fund Department appropriations, economic development fund, capital improvement, capital outlay. Appropriation change total seventy-five thousand dollars, department total seventy-five thousand dollars, fund total seventy-five thousand dollars. Total economic development fund seventy-five thousand dollars, Section Two. And the Director of Finance Treasurer is hereby authorized to draw warrants on the city treasury for payments from any of the foregoing appropriations upon receiving proper certification and vouchers therefore approved by the board or officer authorized by law to approve the same or an ordinance or resolution of council to make expenditures, provided that no warrants shall be drawn or paid for salaries or wages except the persons employed by authority of and in accordance with law or ordinance, provided further that the appropriation for contingencies can only be expended upon approval of a two-thirds vote of council for items of expense constituting a legal obligation against the city and for the purposes other than those covered by other specific appropriations herein made. Section Three. This appropriation ordinance shall be enforced and take effect on its passage pursuant to the provisions of Section twelve point zero five of the chapter of the municipality of Forest Park, Ohio.
Is there a motion, Counselwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of ordinance number zero eight dash two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt ordinance zero eight dash twenty nineteen. Is there a discussion?
Um, yes. The, the reading of the ordinance didn't explain what's being done here. Money is being shifted from the balance in the Economic Development Capital Outlay Fund into a redevelopment grant for, an incentive redevelopment grant for fax and machine. And so it's just a shift from one fund within economic development to another. And I would urge adoption of the motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk please call the roll on ordinance zero eight dash twenty nineteen.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
The ordinance number zero eight dash twenty nineteen passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda, item B is a motion, Counselwoman Collins.
Yes. I make a motion to direct clerk of council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the city of Forest Park does not request a hearing regarding a liquor license request for QA two LLC, DBA, The Cruise Inn and Patio, six ninety-five Northern, Northland Boulevard, Forest Park, Ohio, four five two forty, for a D five A and D six A permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second that we direct clerk of council to notify the liquor department that we, Forest Park does not request a hearing on this transfer of the liquor license for Cruise Inn. Is there any discussion?
Yes. We have received a request from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a liquor license transfer for The Cruise Inn located at six ninety-five Northland Boulevard. The transfer is for D five licensed spirituous, spirituous liquor for on-premise consumption only, beer, wine, and mixed beverages for on premises or off premises in original sealed containers until two thirty A.M., and a D six license, sale of intoxicating liquor on Sunday between the hours of ten A.M. or eleven A.M. and midnight. The transfer request is for a change in the LLC membership interest for The Cruise Inn that is being requested from the current license holder, Kimberly Ann Waxler, wife, to William Waxler, her husband. The Police Department has conducted a background investigation on Mr. Waxler and finds no reason to deny this requested liquor license transfer.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
That would be four yeses, three noes. So the motion passes. Next item on the agenda is item D. Counselwoman Holt.
I would like to make, to make a motion to concur with Recreation Commission's recommendation to remove, for the removal of Ms. Shannon Harden from the Recreation Commission for the term expiring eleven thirty nineteen.
Second.
Been moved in second that the council concur with the Recreation Commission's recommendation to remove Shannon Harden from the Recreation Commission, whose term would have expired eleven thirty nineteen. Is there any discussion?
None, thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed, so the motion passes six one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
For the vote for the liquor license, the three noes were... Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there any further business to come before the body? Any further business to come before the body? Hearing none.